Keith. Yes. Did you get somebody to... Thank you. I mean, have somebody there?
She had somebody lined up.
Roseanne. Did you move somebody to the fire and plan?
Hey, Steven.
The pledge?
Hey, get Steven to do the pledge. We're gonna get Terry King.
Terry. Will you do the pledge? Will you do the pledge? Stacey. Will you do the prayer? Terry was...
What do you think? Mr. Hicks will?
Daryl. Do the prayer.
All right. Benton County County Commission is now moving into the round.
Give the invocation, Daryl Hicks, please.
Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you for the many blessings you receive. Lord, we just ask that each and every one hear you, Lord. We do the county's business according to you, Lord. We hope we put our personal differences aside, Lord, and work for the better of the county. Lord, all this we ask in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Terry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight and having Ward for as our new mayor. And thank you for all the new commissioners that's here. It's gonna be a little different. I'm not used to sitting right here. So, we'll do a roll call by Donna Melton.
Rick.
Roll call. Everybody put us on your tablets for your roll call if you're here.
It's all right.
Eighteen present, no absent.
Okay, we have eighteen present, we have a quorum. First of all, what we're gonna do is announce election for the chairman. Do we have any?
I'll second.
Anyone else like to nominate someone?
Chairman, I'd like to nominate Ward Plant.
Shop local. Okay, nominee, any more nominees? Nominees cease. Roseanne Ward will be, or we need to vote. And it'll be with your tablets if every... No? Say, I'm not used to being here, Roseanne. You gotta hurry up. Okay.
Frank Burr.
She's gonna call him out, and you'll say yes or no for Roseanne. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Gary Fard.
Yes.
Frank Lashley.
Yes.
Duane Fowler.
Yes.
Stacey Hall.
Yes.
Phil Melton.
Yes.
Mike Henry.
Yes.
Logan Ward. Pass. Jimmy Kinnison.
Yes.
Darrell Hicks.
Yes.
Terry King.
Yes.
Jerry Cross.
Yes.
Keith Arnold.
Yes.
Marty Douglas.
Yes.
Stephen Stokes.
Yes.
Deborah Banning.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Rockford.
Yes.
Seventeen yes and one pass.
We have seventeen yes and one pass. Motion carries. Roseanne. We need to take a recess, please. Next on the agenda is the election of the chairman pro temp. So, I open the floor now for nominations. Do I have a nomination for chairman pro temp?
I'm gonna leave Daryl.
Daryl Hicks, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. Kenneth Miller. Mike Nunry. Okay, have a motion. Do we have any other nominations for chairman pro temp?
I'm gonna close nominations.
Okay, we have a motion to cease nominations. Roll call, please.
Keith Arnold.
Yes.
Stephen Stokes.
Yes.
Marty Douglas.
Yes.
Deborah Banning.
Yes.
Kenneth Miller.
Yes.
Frankie Preston.
Yes.
Fred Burr.
Yes.
Frank Lashley.
Yes.
Gary Fard.
Yes.
Duane Fowler.
Yes.
Stacey Hall.
Yes.
Phil Melton.
Yes.
Jimmy Kinnison.
Yes.
Mike Henry.
Yes.
Roseanne Ward.
Yes.
Darrell Hicks.
Pass.
Jerry Cross.
Yes.
Terry King.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Seventeen yes, one pass. Darrell Hicks.
Okay, next on our agenda, well, before we move to the approval of the agenda, I'd like to welcome all of our new commissioners here tonight. We've got Debbie, and we have Marty, and we have Frank, we have Jimmy, and we have Jerry. So, I'd like to...
Keith Arnold?
Keith Arnold? Where are you at, Keith? I don't have my glasses. And Keith, I'm sorry. And also, welcome our new mayor, Mayor Ward. So, now we are at number seven, which is the approval of the agenda. I need a motion and a second, which I already have, which is Stephen Stokes and Daryl Hicks. Any questions? Okay. Voice vote, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? There are none, so motion passes. Next is number eight, which is the citizens' forum. Do we have anyone? It's unusual. So, we move right on to the commissioners' forum. Floor is open for any commissioners that would like to speak. Commissioner Preston.
Thank you, Chairman, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm gonna start out with, I'd like to welcome the new six commissioners. Stay safe, relax, and enjoy your commissioner journey. Eight years ago, my first year as a commissioner, I felt somewhat overwhelmed with all the subjects in the county that I knew none about. My first mayor, my first year as a commissioner, I was appointed to the insurance committee. I didn't know the difference between broker and carrier. I asked you to search for your internal compass. We go in the internal compass, I found mine. Independent thinker, very critical thinker. In my opinion, budget is one of the larger subjects in the county. I remember not knowing what one I was. I remember not knowing what the account was. Since then, I've taken on and I've learned quite a bit about the budget. And there's one about the budget I don't know about. I can't cure your mind, and there's some type of drugs running there I don't know a lot about. But take me as an example. I'm just average, average IQ, average in the budget. If I can learn this stuff, I'm sure that anybody can. I encourage you all to do something that they'll do and learn about, and ask questions and review the mission. And don't always be quick to believe everything that you're told. Four years ago, on my first budget, I'm gonna budget me, right in this room, and I'm not gonna give you a personal complaint, but it was said, and it was said by a person very involved in determining our county budget, who said we need a forty cent property tax increase. And I was told that property values were going down, I was told that sales taxes were going down, and I was told that delinquencies were going up, and a delinquency of the people not paying property taxes. So, the next day, I talked to an administrator of C-Tags. And C-Tags told me, go to the property assessor's office, go to the trustees' office, and ask these same questions, and verify this information that I gave you is accurate. Well, guess what? I went to the property assessor's office, and I learned that property values had gone up eleven million dollars. They didn't go down, they went up eleven million. Sales tax was going out of the roof. I think in 2013, our office, the county office, from sales tax to six hundred thousand, we broke two million this year, and the delinquencies were still hovering around three and a half percent, where they always been. So, being as kind as I could possibly be, I was misled in that subject. And guess what? We didn't have the property taxes again. In closing, I'm just gonna encourage all the new commissioners to clap their hands. Good luck. Thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome. Anyone else? You recognize Debbie?
I know I'm a new commissioner here, and I think I can get right now to something that I feel is very important to me, and very important to Benton County citizens. And that is, if you looked at your newspaper that came out last Wednesday, it says, and you're now hiring correction officers, deputies, dispatchers, maintenance personnel. This is at the sheriff's department. And I'm not pointing fingers at Kenny Christopher at all, but I'm just saying that this is one department that needs to run like a well-oiled machine. Whatever the problem is, I mean, this is frequent that they're having to hire officers. And I'm gonna make it my agenda that we're gonna get to the bottom of these departments. Nobody should have to wait to get the fire department, the ambulance out there, or police officer, because there's not enough people on duty to meet the needs of the county, because lives are at stake when that phone call comes in. And so, fentanyl, when I pick up the paper and I see someone that has come in contact with fentanyl in a Buddhist establishment here in the city, and yes, it's in the city, but it hasn't come through the county for it back to the city, this is unacceptable to me. It is time that Benton County's boarders make the statement that the drugs are stopping here, and we need good officers to handle this problem. And this right here should not be happening. I don't understand what it is, and I'm not, like I said, I'm not pointing fingers at our sheriff. But we need good deputies, we shouldn't have to be taking form. Whatever the problem is, this machine needs to be operated and operated correctly, so that the citizens in this county can feel safe, our children can go to school and feel safe, and the drugs stop pouring into this county. It's got to stop, it's got to stop. People are dying with this fentanyl, and that is one thing that I'm very passionate about. These kids should not have to have their parents hopped up on dope and not taken care of them, and it should not be as available as it is in this county right now. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chairman, can I add to your comment there?
Yes, you may.
So, my name is David Falcon, I'm also serving on the civil service committee. We had ten people signed up for Saturday morning to come take the civil service test. Four people showed up. None of them called except for one, I tell you, they needed to reschedule. So, it's coming down, the people just don't want to work no more. I mean, I wish, we've been trying to put the civil service to figure out how to help. We've done everything we can to help try to figure out the problem, but people are just not showing up to take the test.
Okay, thank you, David. Anyone else before we move on? Commissioner Arnold.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to say I'm glad to be able to come back and be on the county commission. Thirty-six years ago, I got elected at age twenty-one. Things has changed in our county since then. I had hair, and it was a little thinner. But, you know, back then, when the county commission met, we had a goal to work together. And I'm hoping that this is what this commission can do. Majority ruled, I was on the win side, so if I was gonna lose this side, I supported what the commission does. And I hope that's what we can do in Benton County this time. We've got a good set of commissioners, we've got a good mayor, nice chairman, even though she's old-looking, but I'll keep it on that. But, you know, we need to work together to make the county a better place, you know, because we have a lot of potential with our location, our geographic support we have in Benton County, we've got the blue over coming in. And, you know, Miss Banning, you know, there is a lot of problems with, you know, law enforcement, being able to get good qualified people. But, you know, if you can get it, we're gonna have to do that in the pocketbooks, so they go to any county around us and get paid a lot more, be a deputy or president officer or this back there. But I remember when, back then, William Baker reminded me, my friend Matt, when I went up to the radio station, and I told Flash Matt, and I said, you know, it's a privilege and an honor to be able to serve. You know, with every privilege we have, there's a certain amount of responsibility that we have to face. And I hope that we can work together to, you know, work to make Benton County a better place, and, you know, if we're all on the same team, we're always gonna play better. Because, you know, it takes a lot, quite a much energy to argue and to us and disagree than it does to, you know, all of us talking and discussing. So, I hope that's where our commission is gonna go, is go towards working together to make Benton County a better place. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then we will move on to number ten on the agenda, which is where we set time for our county mayor, attorney, finance advisor, guest speakers, or proclamations. This time, I'll recognize our county mayor. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
I don't have a whole lot to say. I just wanna thank everyone of y'all for serving. I served as county commissioner back when I was young, too, and I know that, you know, I had hair then, too, just like Keith. But it's our job. We've got a wonderful group of commissioners. I think we can work together to move Benton County forward, and I look forward to working with you guys. And thanks for all the people in the public that's here tonight. Hey, Everly.
I think she wants to come up and sit with you. Okay, anyone else? We're going to move on then to number eleven, which is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. I have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any amendments? Okay, if none, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Eighteen yes.
Okay, motion carries. Number twelve, number twelve, number twelve, report of the public utilities. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions about that? If none, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Eighteen yes.
Okay, number thirteen is a resolution to reappoint Richard Key and Brad Mills to the E-911 Board for a four-year term. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any discussion? See none? Please vote. Okay, Terry, I'm sorry.
Is Richard or Brad Mills here? In the future, could we not ask, I know Richard, but some of you may not, but Brad Mills, I have no idea who he is. And we need to set a precedent that if they want on a committee, that they should be here, so people see a face with a name, and also, it asks questions if they have him. So, I would like to request that whoever gets appointed, come to these meetings, come to our meeting, and introduce yourselves.
I agree, and we'll make sure that happens.
Thank you.
Okay, any others? If none, please approve this resolution for Richard Key and Brad Mills.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Eighteen yes.
Number fourteen is a resolution appointing both Ray Wilson and Frank Wright to the Board of Public Utilities for a four-year term. We have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Hicks. Any questions? Yeah, they're both here. If anybody would, if you want to, would you gentlemen please stand up, just to let everybody look at you, see that you're here?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah. Okay, no questions, so everyone vote, please.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
What company is rude?
Seventeen yes, one stand.
Motion carries? That's okay. Number fifteen is a resolution appointing James Warren Melton as the county attorney for a four-year term. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Melton? He's standing up back there in the audience, if you do. Okay, I don't see any questions, so we'll go ahead and vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Eighteen yes.
Number sixteen on your agenda, resolution transferring funds in the school's budget in the amount of $20,000. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Arnold. Any questions? Okay, I see no questions, so everyone vote, please.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Eighteen yes.
Number seventeen is a resolution budgeting funds received in the amount of $300 within the sheriff's budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? Okay, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries.
Number eighteen, resolution budgeting funds received in the amount of $55,700 within the school's budget. A motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? If none, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Eighteen yes.
Okay, the next nine resolutions are what we call new money. It's where we are appropriating funds, and they will take two-thirds vote to pass. Have we got any questions about this? Okay, I guess everyone understands, so we'll vote, please.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Eighteen yes.
Number nineteen, resolution appropriating funds in the amount of $13,876 from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund in order to cover the increase in the county liability insurance premium for the fiscal year 22, 23. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions? Okay, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Eighteen yes.
Number twenty is a resolution appropriating funds in the amount of $8,007 from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund in order to cover the new county trustees' bond. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Hicks.
It's number eight, it's supposed to be.
Number eight.
I think you can read into the previous resolution, last couple resolutions from there going on.
On resolution nine.
Yeah. When you've been reading, I've been wondering.
So, resolution number nine is number twenty-one. It's a resolution appropriating funds in the amount of $1,000 from the unassigned fund balance within Fund 171 Capital Projects Public Health and Welfare for the Northwest Tennessee Development District Solid Waste Services. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Hicks. Any questions? If none, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Eighteen yes.
Resolution twenty-two, I mean, number twenty-two, which is resolution ten, is to appropriate funds in the amount of $3,884.40 from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund in order to pay the civil service board members. We have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions concerning this one? Okay, please vote.
Anybody wish to change their vote? Thirteen yes, five no. Motion passes.
Okay, we'll move on then. Number twenty-three is resolution eleven, resolution appropriating funds in the amount of $500 from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund in order to cover, over time, that has been expended during the month of July and August, within the county mayor's budget. We have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any questions? Okay, everyone, please. Okay.
Is this... Can somebody explain what this overtime is called?
What it was is where Ashley would come to these meetings and another meeting, I can't remember which ones she'd go to.
But every budget.
But, sir...
Budget.
Yeah, Phil can explain it more to you.
I thought that's what we were... We talked about it last month, wasn't it? What was the end of it?
Well, it... It originally got $9,000, and then the mayor took office, he wasn't sure whether he was going to do overtime pay or do comp time, and then it was... The amount was thought to be $700, and it was voting down to get a more accurate figure. This is the accurate figure, what it is. The 187 account is a new line item that is established for overtime pay that was not in the charter account for the control of them. That's why that line item has been added to that.
I just wanted to get the question.
Any other questions? If none, please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Seventeen yes, one no. Number twenty-four is resolution twelve, a resolution to appropriate $2,400 from the unassigned fund balance within the County General Fund in order to cover the office rental fee for the economic and community developer at the Chamber of Commerce. Motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Melton. Is there someone over here wanting to speak? Okay, your name's not on my screen, so I was just trying to figure out who it was. You're recognized.
It's not the Economic Community Development Director, part of the Chamber of Commerce. Part of the division, they're separate entities.
They're separate.
Anyone else? Okay.
Why are we... They haven't rent a building that have this department? Does the county not have a building that they could use?
That's the way they set it up. She was just appointed under Randy Shannon when he was mayor, and there's office space there in with the chamber, and it's better that they do work together because they do a lot of the same stuff. She's just economic... Hey, Lori can answer that for you if you'd like for her to. Sorry?
Lori, you're recognized, if you will come forward.
I'm the Chamber of Commerce Executive Director. The... To answer your question, Keith, the economic developer is hired through the county and the industrial board. So we are housing her because... Well, I wasn't really sure how it was going to work out at first, but so far it's been a great experience. Jennifer Wheatley is a past chamber director, so we've been able to work together, and she's taught me a lot, and I've been able to help her with the economic development side. So it's, you know, just worked out really good. The way I understand, the economic development or the industry board, they didn't have a place to house her at. So when she was hired, they come to the chamber and just, you know, we had an extra office, asked if we would do that, and we did, wrote up agreement, it was sent to the county, and then we never got paid. So I had sent an invoice, and then I think it got back to me that they did not have the funds appropriated, so basically that's what this is about tonight, is just appropriating the funds. Now, they have had... I do have an invoice where they have paid. The last... Pay... February to June, she started in February. February to June, they paid $1,000, and then nothing's been paid since for July, August, or September. It's $200 a month. $200 a month. And that covers access to the Wi-Fi, basic office supplies, reasonable access to printer, copier, things like that in office. Any other questions?
Yeah, who pays the chambers when they're...
The chamber. Yeah, yeah.
You know, Danny Oles, that the county gives you the... It comes out of your budget.
It comes out of our budget, yes, so that's correct.
So calculated.
Yeah. We pay $800 to the JR Development for our monthly rent for our office space. With Jennifer being in the office, she's able... Or the industrial board is housing their monthly meetings there also. And we're doing a lot of meetings and, you know...
I do a great job working together and just looking at the total pay side of it. But I'm understanding completely. I'll say this, since Lori took over the chamber and the office, they have all some jobs. And I know in most chambers that I've familiar with, they're all housed in the same building anyway, because most of the information that they need, each one of them works off each other's information. She needs something for industrial, send out to somebody that acquires in the county. She's got the information she needs, I think I'm doing a great job. I just have clarification if it was off.
Right. Thank you so much. And yes, I believe, you know, Chamber of Commerce is there to develop your businesses, you know, to build your business community, and we are a membership-based organization, nonprofit, but we do also receive county funds, city funds, and TRRD funds, and that helps us to do the things that we do, put on the events that we do, and work for the county. The... It works really good with economic development because I believe, feel like, the business development, economic development, and tourism all fall under the same umbrella. So the Chamber of Commerce is kind of like the face of the community. We're one of the first places that people come to, especially when they move here, and they need a map, and they need information. They don't know who to hire for a handyman, or, you know, the different businesses, things like that. So having us all together in one office is working out really well.
All right. Question, King?
Only question, I've got nothing against any of this, I think it's a cheap thing, but is it, from the county attorney's perspective, the county's paying the chamber, but now we're also going to pay the chamber for the rent? Is that okay?
I don't know. In blunt words, I just tell Mr. Melton, since he's going to be the county attorney, has it tomorrow, so he would know, is that particular contract I never saw, was never even told anything about it. So I'm prepared, I did that, I never saw it, so I'm going to reprove you that. I don't know, this is the first time I've ever heard of it. So that's what Commissioner Melton did, yeah.
Terry, I would like to say that the chamber's subletting an office to Jennifer's office. Completely different people, you know what I'm saying? They're subletting it for 200 a month, there's no way we could provide her an office somewhere.
Oh, I understand. I just want to make sure legally we're doing it.
What Jennifer's doing is paying 200 a month of Lori's rent for her, so it don't all come out of her budget. And she's... I mean, both of them are amazing, they're doing a great job, and I'm very, very happy. So I think it's legal because she's subletting that office space to Jennifer, so...
And as far as I know, and I may be wrong, the money that the chamber received from the county is not designated for rent.
I just wanted to make sure we're doing everything we're supposed to do.
Madam Chair, I have one more.
Yes.
On the resolution that shows on our computer, that says 21,400, and the resolution on our paper says 2,400. I will fix that right this second. Yeah, that don't... We need to kind of straighten that one up.
I'll take the 21.
I was like, oh, is that better? That is much better. And that doesn't even need an amendment, it's all in favor. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you all. Mr. Fowler, did you want to speak?
No, she answered.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, everyone vote please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, eighteen yes. Okay, number fifteen, is a resolution appropriating the victim assistant assessment fees that are collected through the courts during the 2021-22 fiscal year in the amount of $16,452.2 in order to remit the funds to the Women's Resource Assistance Program. We have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Anyone have any questions about this? Okay, if none, please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, eighteen yes. Number twenty-six, is a resolution appropriating the drug court fees collected during the 2021-22 fiscal year in the amount of $6,826.69 in order to remit the funds to the state of Tennessee. I have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Nunry. Any questions about the drug court fees? Okay. Please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, eighteen yes. Number twenty-seven, which is resolution fifteen, which is our last one, is a resolution to appropriate the balance left from the 2019 CDVG grant project in the amount of $227,324.25 from the unassigned fund balance within Fund 172 Community Development. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Okay, we have a question?
I did. What is the CDVG grant?
This grant was... This particular grant, specifically, uh... How do you make it? Three... This is a grant that was... Or you might run it. It was effectively paid out in the last fiscal year, and they're getting the life, the life, and the life, and we felt a role is over, so it needs to be... This is the balance is left out of it, of all the things that have been placed, and we need to move it from 172, aside, by 172 lives, to finish your lives, so that that move can be stopped.
Anyone else? If none, please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, eighteen yes. Next on the agenda is appointing notaries, and we have four tonight. Beverly Beal, Bonnie Evans, Rachel Melton, and Sam Rainwater. I think a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Hicks to approve the notaries. If no questions, please vote. Terry Collins? Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, eighteen yes. Next is any other business. Do we have any other business that needs to come before the commission? Sheriff, you're recognized.
Madam Chairman, there's a couple of things I need to bring up tonight. First one, I want to get this one out of the way, because we really need to get something moving on. In June, we had a resolution to have some repairs done on the roof at the jail. We've got a severe leak down there, or a damage factor somewhere or another, in your zone now. And also the water heater, it's been a big issue. There's several of them in there, and we looked at the different prices and things about changing those to the water tanks instead of the setup that we've got, and it's going to be very expensive. The resolution we presented, the mayor didn't like the way it was working, thought the bid stuff should be brought through his office instead of through the sheriff's office, accepting the bids and different things like that. So we've recently, in the July, forced the gold to the mayor's office. Since then, nothing has been done on it, my God. Nobody's ever come back down there and looked at it, or made any decision or anything. Those water tanks, the setup that we've got back there, it's very inefficient. It's what we put in when the jail was filled, and they're going to all have to be replaced, and it would be cheaper, I believe, but I'd like... We need somebody to come in and know what you're talking about, I don't know anything about this stuff. But it's going to be very expensive, and I think there's like six or eight of them. One of them yawned out. The status elements that come in and look at it and said it, that's pretty much obsolete, what we've got down there. Something about the distance between the heaters and all that, and I've summed it well in my head. But it would be better off if we went with the tank system down there and put in two tank systems. But nothing, no bids or anything, have been sent in, nobody submitted for bids or anything. If we stopped at that point, we had won. But we've got a pretty good leak in that roof that needs fixing, and so I would like the mayor's office to do it, and that's fine, it's legal, we just need to get something done on it. And the tanks could go out in any time, so I want to bring out to y'all's attention, it is going to be expensive to fix. I don't remember what the one officer that we had fixed, but at that point when it sold, he said that all of them are bad, they're all have to be replaced. They normally would have been done before that, but they helped so far, but they could go out in any time. So I want to bring out to your attention, that something's come down. The next thing that I need to talk to you about, this is what I would like to do, and I appreciate everybody's had anything to say about this tonight, about us not being able to keep deputies and correctional officers, everything. That is a problem that's going on across the country. Anywhere you go, you're going to see there's signs, and any department that you go to, they're always hiring. There's a very limited supply of certified officers across this state, across the country, and everybody's having to buy for them, and they're not willing to go to the places where you make the least amount of money and the least of benefits. And that's what we have to offer, if we're on a low-end scale. I talked to one sheriff, and I'm going to be real brief. I talked to one sheriff sometime back, and I asked him, I said, "Why is it true the only one in our area that I know of never has any trouble keeping officers?" He never has problems, they've got waiting lists to go to work there, and all the rest of it, we just get whatever's left out there. And he made it as simple as anybody can make it. He said, "You pay them, you give them benefits." Because, he said, "I've always got waiting lists because I pay about two or three dollars more an hour for all my corrections officers, and yes, it's expensive, but I don't have the turnover." You're going to have at least $20,000 tied up in a man when you get him certified. And then he turns around and goes to the next department to pay more money. You can say, "Well, get him signed a contract." I don't know if the contract's going to hold up to mine, but you really want a man, I said this before in here, you really want a man working for you, out here carrying a gun and driving a $50,000 car out here and dealing with the pockets that don't want to be there, holding him back and going where he can make more money. So I'm not saying we've got to pay that much more than anybody else, but we always have the best officers. If they come into this area, moving here, they're going to go apply there first. If they can't get on there, they go to the next county, pay as close. And if they can't get on there, they go to the next one, eventually they work their way down to the next county. But the best ones are the best officers in our area, and we got a lot of them, but not a lot for this particular area. Well, if you're not paying very much, that really reduces your chances of getting good officers because, okay, I can't drive 35 miles to take a... officers, because, okay, I can't drive thirty-five miles to take a job making sixteen dollars now. I can, you know, you just reduce your, by the lower pay of, of your hiring budget, we're in a terrible bind with Sheriff's Department. I don't believe it's any fault of our own over there. Everybody that's left, except for one, he left because he retired, and he said, "I don't make enough money here with my retirement, that it actually costs me to drive here to work." All the rest of them have left for the flat-out reason that some of my employees have actually come up here and spoke, "I'm leaving for more money." My dispatchers, I'm supposed to have, we're required to have two dispatchers on at any time. Right now, I have five, and one of them's fixing the leak. So, my people are working twelve hours a day, seven days a week right now, they can't get their days off that they're supposed to get, they can't take their vacations or nothing, and they're gonna be farmed out, because we can't even get any applicants at what we're paying. Same thing with my deputies, I'm way down on my deputies, no one's applying, because these other counties are paying more money and have better benefits. I'm not, I, I don't know where the fault lies, or what we can or can't do, but we have to do something. If we don't have law enforcement, I'm down to two officers on a day shift, two investigators, and my two deputies and myself. When we have court, I haven't come to explain to the judge this morning, I can't even come to court, because I have to stay and work the road, which means about three days a week we average have in court. Those three days, I'm not in my office taking care of business that I need to be taking care of, but I have to get up and go take calls. I keep one man on the road, and then I go with it, because we don't have enough people. On the night shift, I've got three officers taking care of almost seventeen thousand people in a county that's stretched at sixty-three miles long. It's impossible to do, that lets the thieving go up, that lets the drugs come in, we can't handle what we've got with what we've got. I would like to meet with budget and with law enforcement committee, and anybody else that wants to sit in on it, and let's go over the problems and see if we can come up with anything, because I've had a dead end right now. Another month, two months, flu season hits, somebody else leaves, we're dead in the water. We won't even have enough dispatchers to cover it, this is, this is going, I've lost three officers in a month, they're quitting, and every one of them comes in and says, "It's not where we're working, it's not the work we're doing, it's more money, I can't survive on this." When I come by a sector, as I was coming in the other day, sector's starting out pay over there, I'm talking about a man sitting there with a hammer, chipping aluminum off, very minimum, like twenty dollars an hour, hiring intake. My officers don't make that after they've been there two or three years, they're not making that kind of money. I can't keep them. On the way in, on my trip that I had to go through a couple of days ago, they was advertising in national, I know we're not national, so that's the only thing about that, we have dropped all requirements, they said, of even having a high school equivalent diploma, and it starts paying twenty-four dollars now. Just, just nothing, and I just can't keep them. I understand it's a little cheaper to live here and everything else, but we're talking about certified people being in the people's lives in this county. You can have the best school, you can have anything you want in this county, but if you don't have law enforcement here to take care of it, you ain't got nothing, people won't go where it's safe, and we can't keep them safe with three officers trying to run this whole county. No officer needs to go out on any call anymore, it's not like it was twenty-two years ago. They don't need to go by themselves, you need to send two on anything you've got. I've gotta have some help, we've gotta come up with some ideas, I don't know what we need to do to fix it, I'm willing to work with anybody, but it's something that has to be fixed, and we can't wait another meeting, these last three meetings, we've done nothing. One of them didn't want to do it because it was just prior to the election, next to the actual election, and if we just had, we haven't gotten anywhere in three months, and we didn't get to meet them, because, uh, law enforcement, budget, and everything hasn't met this month. We gotta do something, we gotta do it pretty quick. I don't mind working, I hope I proved that over the last eight years, and I put in a lot of hours, and I get called out all the time, day and night, because I won't let my officers go out by themselves. If we get a red on the interstate, we need three men up there, I've got the rest of the county by myself. If a man goes out on the commissary, he can grant his money. The next officer's supposed down there with me, I'll leave him one, cover the rest of this whole county for anything that happens. A car wreck, heart attack, we're usually way ahead of the ambulance to get there, and anything that goes on, if somebody calls and says, "Hey, they kicked my door in," I don't have nobody to see it, except one man, and then I gotta get up and go with him, and by the time I get dressed and get up and go with him, most of the time, it's fucked up over. But we gotta do something, and that's something y'all really need to be thinking on, and we really need to set something up as fast as possible, I don't mean take up your time, but that's just something that's really got to be fixed. Situation with our SRO officer, we gotta get on the ball, I'm telling you, if we're not getting anything done on that, and if something happens, we are gonna be, we're gonna be lacking stock in the whole nation. You mean you didn't have any school resource officers? I, I don't want to be any of that.
Sheriff, um, if somebody does apply to be an officer, how long do they have to wait typically to take the civil services exam?
The civil service exam is given once a month, so it depends on when they apply. If they're applying, it's like, it's the third Saturday of each month, and if they apply a few days after that, they may have to wait three or four weeks to get back in there. Then, when they give the test, let me know if I'm wrong, they, they have to send off the results on the test, to get back the results on the test, usually takes four or five days.
Two, couple days.
We get that back, then, when we get that back, then we can interview, then after that, we have to turn around and, uh, send them for a psyche valve, send the psyche valve, usually it takes about a week, send them down there, get it set up, maybe a week, we can have to get them in and get the results back, so you could be looking at up to five weeks, and, you know, if you don't have a job, that's different, now, if, if you apply the week before they're giving the test, then, uh, that's, you know, that speeds it up a whole lot, but if there's a situation that we're in, that we just, we're not getting that many applicants, that many people are just not wanting to work, and a lot of them are going to dispatch, law enforcement, and corrections, and they realize, "This ain't what I signed up for, I ain't cut out for it," and it takes a select group of people that are, uh, you know, I couldn't, I, I'm not cut out for your whole life, I'm not cut out for your middle life, but certain people are, when you first respond, we deal with everything in your county office, you deal with everything, whatever, anybody I'm on, it rolls down to the Sheriff's Department, but we gotta have some help, and I don't know what it takes to get it, but, uh, I, I, I wouldn't bring this up for a couple more months, because I can see it's going down real fast, and I've been bringing it up for eight years, but we are in dire straits right now of what we're gonna do, so we've gotta do something, so if we could have a special call meeting, or whatever we need to do, so we can sit down and break it down, if y'all want to talk about it all night tonight, I'll sit here and talk about it. I'm doing the very best that I know how to do with the department, but when you don't have the money, and your budget comes out, and you just cut two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, but we don't have, well, we ain't doing a true budget, we all know that, we got to do something to fix it. Whatever y'all want, if you want to talk about it tonight, we'll talk about it, if you want to set up a meeting, whatever we can do to fix it, but I need some help down there, and I need it quick. All the progress that I can say we've made on the drugs over the last eight years, and we have done good, I, man, my officers, my corrections officers, my deputies, I couldn't be more proud of the job they've done. We're losing the ground right now, and I can see it, the percentages are gonna go back up with what we've been getting, car stops that we're making, I try to keep up with all that. The drugs are picking back up, and we don't want that in this county, we gotta protect our kids, we gotta protect our citizens, we gotta do what's right. Don't know where the money comes from, don't know what it pays, if you can help the people to work for me, and they tell you that I'm the problem, then I'll say I'm the problem, but all, all the people come in and say, "Sheriff, I don't wanna leave, I like my job, I like working here, but I can't live on this kind of money, I've got a family to support, I can make three dollars more an hour somewhere else, five dollars more an hour." I don't know where the money comes from, or what we have to do, but we've got to do something to get, get these certified officers in here.
Sheriff, I think that probably this could be something brought up in our law enforcement committees, and let them study this, and, and then at any time, if we need a special call meeting, or if you just want to invite some of the commissioners to come down to your office, and all sit together and, and talk there, I don't think we're going to be able to solve it here right now, but we need to, yeah.
I can't wait another month.
Okay, well, we'll start on that this month then, we'll, we'll start committee meetings pretty quick.
Yeah, it needs to go to law enforcement and budget with, with this problem.
Okay, yeah, and the mayor said and budget too, those committees need to work together to help you in any way that we can.
Yes, ma'am, that's what I was suggesting, if we could have a meeting, I don't care if it's in the morning, it don't matter, maybe we've got to do something, but when that nine-one-one call rings, and they, or one dispatcher, and somebody gets hurt or gets killed, we gonna be in bad shape. If something happens back there in that jail, and the man came into the state last year and told you, "We got to hire four more correctional officers back there at Wick State Service Station," we totally wasn't gonna do it, so when something happens back there, get ready, it'll cost us a whole lot more. I tried to bring that to everybody's attention, but that's where we're at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone want to make any comments about what he said? Commissioner Stokes?
Uh, I appreciate what you did at Sheriff's Department, I know that we have good leadership over there, and you are correct, you are able to reach out to your budget committee and your law enforcement committee, and your county mayor, we will support you. I would encourage you that any time that those committees meet, that you and your jail administrator come to those meetings, that way you can voice your concern directly, and then we can work to resolve whatever issue there is. As far as looking at, at budgeting and, and looking for more money, uh, there might be opportunities that, for any department, to be able to save. I know with the maintenance program that we're looking at for the, uh, security system, that was a seventy-two thousand dollar ticket for a three-year maintenance program, and we do look to put that out for bid, and I appreciate you being open to that idea. But there are probably a lot of other opportunities that we could look to save, and so we will, we will commit to helping you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Arnold?
Sheriff, I know, I've talked to Kenny a lot, I'm in the bond business, and those stuff, Sheriff's Department in this county and some other counties, and do we have a reserve program now, where you have reserve officers that ride with your officers?
I have three groups of officers.
That would possibly take care of, if you had some reserves at night, if we put two people in a car, or, or have them reserve, and they drive a car by themselves, I know they used to, again, a lot still.
They could, it's not recommended by the state now, the state's trying to do a way to reserve programs to cause liability, but yes, we do have, but I can also put them out by themselves, and that's like, just cover for any route or something like that, but I've only got, uh, really one active reserve right now, I've got three, but I only have one active.
Well, a lot of people, you know, dealing in Big County, we're a long nerve county. Uh, I don't sleep a lot at night, so I, I watch a lot of Higgin Channel, and I listen to the scan, and Saturday night, they had calls in the judiciary, and at the same time, they had calls down in Big County, and, uh, there's no way that they, you know, can get to one spot, they've got one call that they've answered forty-eight times in one month, not far from my house, it's a, it's a person that's, you know, not thinking, you know, old person here, thinking that, you know, and they had to answer that call, I mean, I've even told some of the deputy, they're like, "I'll just go down over there, you know, she's about from my house, to make sure nobody's going there and calling," but they had to answer those calls regardless of, what if it is somebody actually there that, you know, but they've been there forty-eight times, I think, I love them, and, you know, it's a hard thing when you go to Henry County and, and make four, five dollars an hour more, or go to Carroll County and do the same thing. We all want law enforcement, and we all want them when we need them, uh, but it's kinda like insurance, you know, we, we buy it, but we don't want to use it, but we're gonna have to have, look at that in depth, I mean, we can't let our buildings go down, or, or the roof leaking. The, the water hangers you're talking about, are they home-demand water hangers, or they got the boiler system?
It's set up kind of the boiler system, the way I understand it, I know nothing about those things, I know there's either six or eight of them, and the one we replaced, tremendous amount fixed it, and the man looked at it and said, "All the rest of them are not far from having it," and I don't think you can even set it back up like it is because of new regulations, they have to be so many inches and feet apart, he said that, "I would just recommend, I want you to stay," he said, "I would recommend you go with the tank pipe instead of what you got," whatever that means.
Has, has the roof issue that we've got, that it been turned into the insurance company to?
Hasn't done any damage, it, uh, it's just, I don't know, the design was great, one of the things that, that, uh, Mayor actually had suggested on this roof was that we have an engineer come look at it, it don't need to be restructured, we don't need an engineer, we just need roof fix, and the guy come look at it, the roof, man, does it, and he come and look at it, and he said, he threw a price out there, and I said, "You don't need to give me the price, it's gotta go to the mayor's office, you're gonna have to write it up," and I said, "Do you see any damage?" He said, "You don't have any damage yet, because you've got a pretty good leak up there, and it's gonna get worse." So, we don't have to restructure, so we don't really need an engineer to come in and change and fix the roofs or anything like that, we just need to fix it.
But if we've got damage to the roof, that would be something that would be covered by our insurance, you know, that's what it would do, if we turned it into the insurance company, they would tell you to go ahead and make emergency repairs, you know, and keep it from doing any damage inside a building?
I think it's just required repair, the building's fourteen years old, it's the most cheap building I've ever seen in my life, and it's just, nobody oversees when it's built, and everything is coming apart, and every time we go to get a part for it, they tell us the same thing, "How was your jail?" Once they were fourteen years old, as, well, these parts was obsolete twenty years ago, they was obsolete when they put them in, I don't know who put them in, and, uh, I mean, we can't even get them, we'll have to upgrade to something, there were light fixtures, anything that's in there. We've still got the frames set down, this is how bad it was when it was built, not that's helped anything. They ordered the wrong metal framing for the windows that go in, in the cell back there, and nobody made them send them back, they just went and got new ones, and so they've been sitting in the basement for fourteen years, there's no telling what them guys cost, thousands and thousands of dollars, and they've been sitting there all this time, because nobody made them order the right ones, they came in and, "Well, you can't use them in the jail." Okay, well, we'll just order new ones to keep them, so we've kinda got to it when that jail was built, and it's just, it's constant right now, it's in the jail. But, uh, we'll, we'll sit down and talk about it, whenever, whenever y'all want to do, any time, and if any of you, and I encourage you, I've asked this several times, come down, and I'll walk you through that jail, I'm really proud of the way it's looked, the way it's kept up, everybody that comes in and inspects jails or anything, talks about how clean it is, and, uh, how you don't have a, don't smell in that jail, if it looks good, I'm really proud of the way they take it, take care of it, but I encourage you to come down and look, we'll try to enlighten on what we do, and try to do, and what we need, don't need, before we just roll on something and say, "I don't think you need it." I ain't gonna come out on your job and tell you what you need, don't need, and I won't ask for nothing if you don't need it, but if you'll come down, I'll be glad to walk you through, talk to you about it, any time, twenty-four seven. I appreciate y'all's interest.
Sheriff, at any time, if you want to set up a meeting where you can have more than just one commissioner, have a group, if you'll let us know, we'll put out the information and the date and the time, if you want to set that up, okay?
I'll, I'll give it, I'll give it to y'all when we set it up, thank y'all very much.
Anything else?
I've got one thing, I'd like to thank Sean Johnson for serving the county for the last four years, appreciate that, sir.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, one thing about next month, our committee meetings will fall on Columbus Day, I know that's a federal holiday, but I think the courthouse is open anyway that day, so we're going to continue on with our committee meetings on that Monday, and as far as the committees, um, I'll be sending out an email just within a few days of the new committees, so you can be looking for that. Anything else? Okay, then, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion by? Motion by who? Commissioner Miller? And a second by Commissioner Stokes? All in favor, don't close your tablets, you're supposed to, you're supposed to vote to adjourn. Yeah. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, to adjourn. Okay, meeting's adjourned. I do get lost every now and then, I don't know how I got there on that one, I'm sitting there like, I don't know how I got lost on that one.